As soon as I turn my mic on, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the regular scheduled meeting for the Beaver Creek City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Litteral. Councilmember Rushing.
Here.
Councilmember Upton.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. Do I hear a motion for Councilmember Litteral?
I would move that we excuse Councilmember Litteral.
Second.
The motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Litteral. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. I will now turn the meeting over to Councilmember Rushing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we all would rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we would, all remain standing for just a brief moment of silence.
All right, we have an agenda before us. Are there any changes, discussion?
Seeing none, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Approval of the minutes. January 28, 2019, regular meeting. Any changes?
I've moved to approve the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for January 28 as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next, the minutes for the February 11 regular scheduled council meeting. Any changes?
Seeing none, I move to approve the February 11, 2019, regular meeting minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted for February 11, 2019. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Move on to the minutes for February 19, 2019. Anyone?
I move to approve the minutes of the February 19 meeting.
Second.
This is a work session. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for the work session on February 19, 2019. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, decision items. Tonight for...
He's eager to get going.
He is eager, isn't he? Oh, decision items. Tonight, we have board and commission appointments, and so who's going to be our referee tonight to help us organize this? We... Pardon?
She's going to take it all now. With the computer, with the new stuff we got, we can control it right there.
All right, so we're going to start...
Welcome to the '90s, kids.
We're going to start with the planning commission. All right, well, we're looking for any discussion on the appointments, and if not, then we would look for nominations to be appointed to the planning commission. Do I hear any?
Mr. Mayor, I move to open nominations for the planning commission.
That'd be the good first step. Thank you. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations for planning commission. Now we can go.
Mr. Mayor, I move to nominate Mr. Self.
Aye, aye, aye. Everybody vote aye, please.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
For.
For opening nominations.
I did not call.
Just opening.
Okay. Thank you. It's been a long...
We're going to take a question on it.
All right. Now I'll accept your nomination, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to nominate Mr. Self for the planning commission.
Thank you. Any other nominations?
I would move to nominate Nathan Schreider. Nathaniel Schreider.
Thank you. Any other further nominations? Do I hear a motion to...
Nominations.
I have a motion to... I have a motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. All right, do I have a motion to appoint?
I would move that we appoint Michael Self and Nathaniel Schreider to the planning commission.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Self and Mr. Nathaniel... or Mr. Self and Mr. Schreider to the planning commission for this new term. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Do I have a motion to open?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations for the Board of Zoning Appeals. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now, do I have any nominations?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Mr. Archibald.
Second.
You don't have a second, please.
You don't need a second nomination.
Do I have any other nominations?
Mr. Mayor, I move to nominate Mr. Richard Porter.
Okay. Any other nominations? I'm going to pass the gavel. I would like to nominate Mr. Sundar.
Yes.
Any further nominations?
Mr. Mayor, I move to close nominations for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I have a second. I have a motion and a second to close nominations for the Board of Zoning Appeals. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. And we have three individuals for two seats, so we will need to vote. Would you like to conduct that vote for us, please?
Raise your hands for those who wish to vote. You get two votes.
That's right.
Remember that. For Dan Archibald, one, two, three. Richard Porter. One, two, three. Mr. Sundar. One, two, three. Six.
We only have two votes from each person?
Yep. That's a total of 12.
Yeah.
Twelve votes. Okay, well, we have to go...
Three.
We have to vote a second time. We each get one vote between Dan Archibald and Richard Porter. So the first one will be Mr. Archibald.
Four.
And Richard Porter. Two. Okay. Well, then, we've got Richard Porter and... I mean, I'm sorry, Dan Archibald and Sundar. Mr. Sundar. So we need someone to appoint.
Okay.
I would move that we appoint Mr. Sundar and Mr. Archibald to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Sundar and Mr. Archibald to the Board of Zoning Appeals. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to... Next on our list is the Charter Review Commission and some earlier discussion in order to try to have seven. Is it okay if we postpone that till maybe the first meeting in March? Everybody good with that?
I agree.
Do we need officially table that?
I don't think so. It's not listed officially on the agenda, is it?
I don't believe so.
No.
Just...
No.
No.
Board and commission appointments.
The other one is the Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council.
None. We will have one.
And there again, it's a committee of seven, and we only have six potential applicants.
Five.
Five? Sorry.
Now we only have four.
Oh, we lost one.
Now we only have four.
You lost one?
We appoint Mr. Sundar to...
Right.
So the Charter Review and Community Investment and CRA is what we're going to table? Yeah, we do not have any applications at this time, so we can table...
Do you want officially... Mayor and council, just for the record, and just so we have, I guess, to make it a clean record, do you want to do just a simple motion to postpone these, the appointment of those to the next meeting, which would be March 11? Just that way, it'll show up in the minutes?
I would move that we...
Or further, I mean, depending on...
Yeah, we got...
I would post... I would move that we postpone the appointment to the Community Reinvestment Areas Council and to the Charter Review Commission until a later date.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to postpone appointments to Charter Review and the Community Reinvestment Area. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're moving on to Parks, Recreation and Culture.
Sandy. I would nominate Candy Meyer.
Open nominations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations.
I did.
You. Sorry, I was getting a question over here.
I know. It's good.
Aye.
All in favor of opening nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Now I'll take the nomination.
I would like to nominate Candy Meyer.
Any further nominations?
Mayor, I'd move to close nominations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to appoint Candy Meyer?
I would move that we appoint Candy Meyer to the Parks, Recreation and Culture Commission.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Candy Meyer to the Parks, Recreation and Culture Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, BikeWay Advisory Board. Do I have a motion to open?
I would move that we open nominations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Do I have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Anderson.
I would nominate Keith Hutchinson.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to close nominations.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations for the BikeWay Advisory Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to appoint?
I would move that we appoint Matthew Anderson and Keith Hutchinson to the BikeWay Advisory Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Anderson and Mr. Hutchinson to the BikeWay Advisory Committee. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, Tree Advisory Board. Do I have a motion to open?
Mr. Mayor, I move to open nominations for the Tree Advisory Board.
Second.
Motion and a second to open Tree Advisory Board nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Do I have any nominations?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Mr. Jeff Bershine.
Second.
Any further nominations?
I would move that we close nominations.
I have a motion to close. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nomination's closed. Do I have a motion to appoint?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Bershine to the Tree Advisory Board.
Now I second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Bershine to the Tree Advisory Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next, Youth Development Committee. Do I have a motion to open?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations for Youth Development Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a nomination?
Mr. Mayor, I move to nominate Jennifer Holland.
Mr. Mayor, I move to nominate Chris Hadley.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close nominations.
Oh, well, we can... We have more to appoint. Oh, there's one too? Okay.
Renew my motion to close nominations.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to appoint?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to appoint Mr. Hadley and Ms. Holland to the Youth Development Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Hadley and Ms. Holland to the Tree Advisory...
No.
No, I'm sorry. To the Youth Development Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Moving on, next is the Environmental Advisory Board. There's five seats.
Five seats.
Hmm?
Two applicants.
Three.
Three. All right, do I have a motion to open?
Yeah, we only have three applicants.
So I would move that we open nominations.
Second.
And I didn't put them all on here.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations for the Environmental Advisory Board.
I would move that...
I'm going to vote here first. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? Ready for nominations?
Hold on, I missed this one. I even flipped it.
So...
Now I'll take nominations.
I would move to nominate Veronica Porchitton.
I'd like to nominate John Compton.
I move to nominate Brian Smith.
We have discussion?
Yes.
So Brian Smith's first choice was to be on the Community Investment Committee, and we need people on that board. So I want to pay attention to...
Good point.
Keeping those who put that as their first choice to remember that. Yeah.
John Compton as well. Put it as number three.
She's on.
Yeah. Well, he's still...
John Compton put... The Environmental Advisory Board is two, though.
But he's still one of...
Right.
He's still one of the six.
No, I get it. I'm just... I was just calling attention.
Yeah.
No, you're right.
So...
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to close nominations.
Good move. Second.
Well, I don't... I don't even want that yet. The... You know, maybe we just need to hold off on that whole... On that whole board.
On this one along with the other one, yeah. Because it's going to impact your...
We do not want to tie it up to where we can't...
We will re-advertize, try to get more people for all of these that are left. So if you guys want to do a motion to table this one as well, then...
Yeah.
I would move that we postpone appointing people to the Environmental Advisory Board until a later meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to postpone the appointments to the Environmental Advisory Board until next month. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Personnel Board.
Nope. He's already been appointed to the Youth Council.
Who? This guy?
Mr. Rainey is also...
Rainey is still...
Douglas Rainey?
Still have one over there.
Yeah.
How about that Doug guy?
We've not appointed Mr. Douglas Rainey.
Right. So please, do I have a motion to open?
I move to open nominations for personnel.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations for Personnel Board. Do I have any nominations?
I would move to nominate Douglas Rainey.
They just make a note is that this board, I think, last met a decade ago, this particular board. And so just a thought is if this individual might want to move on one of these other boards where that we do need members, that's just something council might want to bear in mind.
This is their first choice.
This was his first choice, and for the boards that we need help with, he did not put in for.
And he's kicking... He theoretically could resign if we needed it had...
Okay. Why'd you point out it?
All right. Any further nominations?
I move to close nominations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations for the Personnel Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do I have a motion to appoint?
Motion to appoint Mr. Rainey to the Personnel Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Rainey to the Personnel Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Impact Fee Appeals. That's another one that doesn't beat. Probably hasn't met for a whole long time either.
No.
I would move that we...
And I think we hold off on that one maybe because it... That also goes back to the others.
I would move that we postpone the appointment of people to the Impact Fee Appeals Board until a later meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to postpone the appointments to the Impact Fee Appeals Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's see here. Tax Incentive Review Council, nothing.
That's it.
That's it.
Okay, yep. All right, so we need to then go over this list and see who's not been appointed to a particular position and see if we can reach out to them and fill those two very important spots that we need to fill out.
All of the spots are important.
Well, then, I'm... Yes, I'm sorry. I shouldn't have said that.
All of those spots are very important.
More urgent, is the right word.
Urgent.
More urgent spots.
With the clerk and myself, we'll be reaching out, trying to... Social media and back on a press release and stuff of trying to get more recruits, volunteers.
Anyone out there that happens to be watching or listening, please give that some consideration or if you know a friend or neighbor that is interested in being part of the local government activities, please have them contact the city. And applications are on the website. That's even better. Thank you very much. All right, moving on. Dayton Development Coalition Community Leader Fly-In. Do you want to discuss that at all, Mr. Landrum?
At our last work session, there's a discussion item we had on as far as the DDC fly-in, which is happening in April. Sorry, I don't have the date off the top of my head, but in April, and we... I was asked whether or not myself and/or what representative of council was to attend after discussion of, you know, unless things have changed. I think the discussion was myself and Mayor Stone would attend. So this was just to formally acknowledge the decision of council to that unless it's changed.
I thought you were going to go.
I can't this year, unfortunately.
But you thought through it.
I did. I thought through it, but unfortunately, it's not going to... It won't work this year. But I do think... I do agree that it is important for someone on council to go. It is a very worthwhile event. I know you enjoy the League of Cities as well, and it's similar information, but more tailored to what we do here in the local area.
You could do it.
No. I would love to go. We had a great time. We made some very meaningful relationships last year, so I'm excited for Mayor Stone to go and build on those relationships and make some new ones this year, too.
I would move...
I tried to get her to go.
I know. I know. I know. I listened to the discussion. I would move to approve having our city manager, Pete Landrum, and our mayor, Bob Stone, participate in the 2019 Dayton Development Coalition Community Leader Fly-In to Washington, DC.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the city manager and the mayor to attend the DDC fly-in.
Second.
Oops, sorry.
That's good enough. I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, liquor permits. I see the chief out there. Good morning. Evening, chief.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I have the transfer of a liquor permit. Wings Bar and Grill doing business as Wings Bar and Grill. Ohio Division of Liquor Control notified us of a request to transfer the D5I, D6 liquor permit from Beef's 2 LLC. Doing business as Beef O'Brady's Family Sports Pub. 3347 CJ Drive to Wings Bar and Grill LLC. Same address. Background checks required by the Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control were conducted on the shareholders, business owners, and staff is recommending this application request move forward without comment.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Mr. Mayor, motion to accept without comment.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Council time. Let's mix it up just a little bit. Mr. Upton, would you like to start?
Totally off guard here, Mr. Mayor. No, I want to follow up on my comments from our last meeting where I thanked our road crews and everyone that was out working. I want to continue to thank them because we've had some more weather this time, windy weather come through in the last few weeks, and they've been out making sure streets[1488.41]
And they've been out making sure streets are clear of debris and helping out, so appreciate what, you know, the staff's efforts back there. That's all for me.
Thank you very much. Let's go to the other side. How about Councilmember Vance?
No, no report.
In that case, back to you.
Appreciate the efforts of all the groups involved in the date, the Day of Caring. Had the opportunity to attend over at the Senior Citizen Center, and wonderful breakfast, great turnout from what I could see. And I'm sure it was the same at the other locations in Beaver Creek. So special thanks and congratulations to all involved.
Thank you. Councilmember Rush.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Several events, but I do just wanna focus on one this evening. Had the opportunity to attend the Green County Boy Scouts Angel Breakfast a couple of weeks ago. And it was a great event. Some numbers that truly impact Beaver Creek. Within our school district, we have eight packs, seven troops, and seven crews and posts. Of all Beaver Creek students, over fifteen percent are served by the scouts, either through Cub Scouts. Over sixteen percent are touched by Boy Scouts of America. And about two percent are venturing into joining the Boy Scouts as well. It was a great breakfast to bring support to a vital service for Green County, but especially to Beaver Creek. Where almost a fifth of all Beaver Creek students are impacted in some way through scouting. So I just wanna give kudos to the... to council and all those involved to bring a great event. That's it.
Well, thank you. Vice Mayor Garcia.
I just wanna congratulate some of the high school teams. I know we had a lot of swimming and wrestling and gymnastics. They were all going on to state and sectionals. And I just wanna very quickly congratulate the high school girls gymnastics team on their third place at districts. And also the high school girls bowling team for their OHSA Division One sectional title. So we had a number of different events over the weekend and a number of different awards brought to the Beaver Creek area. So once again, just continuing that tradition of excellence, and congratulations to everyone involved.
Very good. Thank you. Mayor's report. I didn't have very little this evening either. I did this morning, though. Had the... Had the pleasure of sitting with a couple of classes over at Primrose... Primrose School and reading Dr. Seuss books. So that's always fun. So it's just those little things that make your day a special day.
Was it day hair day that you...
Hat day.
Hat day.
Hat day, but they did...
They've got a different thing for each day.
It was hat day, and some of the youngsters had on some very nice hats.
Wear a hat. All kinds of stuff.
Absolutely.
Enjoy reading.
And with that, we'll move on to city manager's report.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Just a few things real quick. Congratulations. We're reaching out to the winner of this year's Build a Snowman photo contest. So we're still reaching out to them by the email that we had received. But the winner was the, I guess you could say, the Star Wars themed, the one with the life saber. So that's the... That's the winning snowman. So we'll be reaching that out, and once we get official names and lists, we'll maybe we'll re-congratulate them. But Diane took some time. Diane Gould took some time and put every single picture that was accepted and that was entered this year into that. And so you can see, we had a great number of snowmen built and a lot of fun, it looks like, that was had building them. So that's a... That's a contest I wish we couldn't have, but we had plenty of opportunities this year. So congratulations and thanks for participating to everyone. I just wanted to reemphasize, we talked about this, the Weekend of Jazz coming up. Get your tickets, March first, March second. And that Thursday before that, what, the twenty-eighth of February, where the... Go ahead, Diane, the band.
Thursday, the twenty-eighth, is all our Beaver Creek bands, the middle school bands and the high school bands. All play.
Start at eight as well?
No, that starts early. I believe that one starts at six. But they start with the middle school and work their way up. It's either six or seven. I can't remember, and I need to know because I have to go take pictures.
All right, but let's support the bands here, Weekend Jazz. This is top performers that come in. You would pay a lot more money than these tickets cost at other locations. But this is something that we take for granted around in this area that this happens. So please, any of you that have been to this, support this and come to the Weekend Jazz, just coming up this coming weekend. And lastly, just wanted to get this out, because it is getting that spring weather coming very soon. But the Green County Tire Amnesty Collection, this is through a grant, and there is a charge for some of these tires. But believe it or not, we never can figure out where all the tires come from. But some people move into farm... old farms or old houses, and then there's tons of tires that have been collected on the properties as people begin to clean it up. But this tire amnesty, you got the first dates March twenty-eighth coming right up, nine AM to eleven AM on Thursday. It can be dropped off location to Green County Environmental Services. And you see the... To register the Green Soil and Water Conservation District, three seven two four four seven eight, extension three. I think you'll see some of... On the Green County Environmental Services website, and I think we're gonna try to get some on social media as well. It's a good way of getting rid of those tires and not burying them or letting them build up until you don't know what to do with it. So take that in mind, and other than that, that's all I have tonight.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is citizen comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address council on any issue at all? Anything? I see one young fellow out there just going like this. Are you just here to watch us today? Boy Scouts. Would you please introduce yourself, though? Would you please go up to the mic and introduce yourself and tell us what troop you're with?
Hi, I am Xander Ackerman, and I am in Troop Eight Seventy, run by our church. And I am trying to do the citizen community and communications. My bachelors involves me to be at a city council meeting.
Well, that's fantastic. I'll tell you what, if you stick around for a few minutes after council, you can talk to any of us that you'd like to. We'll be glad to answer your questions. Okay? All right, thanks for coming. Anyone else? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion and adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.